Hello, my name is Brian Clark. I'm editor with the Modesto Bee. And welcome to tonight's 2020 General Election Forum, featuring the Modesto City Council District Six candidates. They are Jessica Gonzalez, Kelston Ober, Hunter Salz, and David Wright. They're vying to replace the outgoing Doug Ridenhour to represent the district that is in northeast Modesto. Hosting or moderating tonight's panel will be Modesto Bee Opinions Editor Garth Stapley. He'll be joined by our editorial board, myself, managing editor Patty Guerra, and Maria Figueroa, the Bee's information and research specialists. Garth, take it away.
Thank you. Well, we're certainly pleased to have all of you candidates with us and to have an opportunity to discuss some of these issues that are important to all of us here in Modesto. We'll start with opening statements. There will be one minute each. And begin with Jessica.
Hello. My name is Jessica Gonzalez, and I'm your local mechanic shop's office manager. And I'm also a candidate for City Council member of Modesto, District Six. Growing up, I aspired to study psychology so I can help people with their mental health and ensure their stability, their security, and their safety. Unfortunately, I was unable to continue that path, so I took the initiative to strive for my goals. My current job consists of interacting with customers all day, every day, and throughout each and every step we take with their vehicle. I receive all types of people coming in and out of my building, and I'm proud to say that I've got to know almost every single one of them personally. And I've been able to help everyone to the best of my ability. I've learned so much along the way, and I am determined to learn this new field of politics as well as I learned the automotive industry. And I'm running for my people, for the people. And my goal is to listen to them and to help them the same way that I was determined to help my customers. I believe communication between the government and the people is important, and that's why I say stronger communication makes stronger communities.
Thank you, Jessica. All right, Kelston Ober, please.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kelston Ober. I'm a local business owner here in Modesto and have been for the last 10 years. I know what it takes to execute. And I am going back to, I am thankful for what the city of Modesto has allowed me to do, growing my small business here. I grew up here, and I'm a father of four with four children here in the east side of Modesto. I want to run for city council because I see the changes needed to be made. And talking with our local residents here, I know that I'm not the only one that kind of feels that we need changes here in Modesto in general. I think we need a younger and newer ideas in the city council, people without any ulterior motives. And I think I have a lot of knowledge and ideas to bring to the city, and I would love to do it. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Hunter Salz.
How you doing? My name is Hunter Salz. I've lived in Modesto all of my life. I was born and raised here. My grandfather and my father, Jerry and Scott respectively, they've been in Modesto their entire lives. My grandfather is on the Walk of Fame for graffiti here in downtown Modesto. My father works at Willie Printing, and I work with him. And I enjoy being a part of a family that works and loves Modesto. And I graduated high school at Central Catholic in 2015. And I wanted to go to college, but I decided that I wanted to serve my country first and, you know, get back to my home, to my country. And so I joined the U.S. Army as a 19 kilo or a M1 Abrams armor crewman. I drove, shot, loaded, and once commanded a tank, which was a funny story. But anyway, I came home. I joined the California National Guard as a 27 Delta paralegal specialist, who I still currently serve with them off of Kansas. I wanted to run for city council because I've wanted to bring youthful energy to the city council, bring change that people want to see. And I just want to do the best for my town and do the best for my community.
Thank you. David Wright.
Well, thank you, Brian, Garth, and Maria, for this opportunity to be part of this forum. I've been married for 45 years to my wife, Deborah. We have two children. I have four granddaughters, and one granddaughter arriving in a couple of weeks. I'm a successful business owner for 35 years here in Modesto and have served on different nonprofit boards here in Modesto. I have also served on different committees for the city of Modesto, and I am on two current committees for the city of Modesto. We love Modesto, and Modesto is a great place to live. And thank you for having us.
Okay, so this will be the first question, and it's going to be a 30-second question. So we're going to start, the person to start with is going to be Kelston. If you were in charge of marketing Modesto, what's the one thing you tell people about why they should live here? 30 seconds.
So of course, we have the hot August nights, the graffiti. It's a very unique, special town that has, it's a different feel. I've been to other towns in California, and there's nothing like Modesto, especially during the summer months and with the car shows. And so I would definitely, you know, talk about those things that we have really something unique that we've been able to do within our town. So I think that that's a positive that I could, I could tell a new resident moving into Modesto area.
Okay. Same question, Hunter. If you're in charge of marketing in Modesto, what's one thing you tell people about why they should live here?
I definitely would say, similar to what Kelston said, you know, the history of Modesto is a wonderful history, the graffiti scene that I've been around since I was a kid, because my grandfather, like I said before, and it's just a lovely scene to get yourself acquainted with and enjoy. Also, I think that Modesto is a town of people who make whatever they want to make out of their opportunities here, you know? We have all different types of businesses, all different kinds of people who work all different types of jobs. And I think that Modesto is a mixture of great people, great cultures, and just great relationships. And so I think in charge of marketing, I would say, you know, it's a great opportunity just to come to a town where people accept you, work with you, and want to, you know, grow to build a better community.
Okay. Same question, David.
No, Modesto is a great place to live, and we're centrally located right here in the Central Valley. So if you want to get up in the morning and go to Yosemite, you can. If you want to come back in the afternoon, go to San Francisco, you can, or to Monterey. We're centrally located. Also, we have some great opportunities here. We are a diverse economy. We have a strong employer base. We have the Gallow Center for the Arts. It's one of the top-notch centers throughout California. Concert in the Park, America Graffiti. It's just a great place to live.
Okay. And same question, Jessica.
Hi. Okay, so for someone who would be moving here, I would suggest to them, if they have a family, you know, there's Fun Works to take their family to, there's Boomers to take their family to, Brendan Theater downtown. There's a lot of activities that both families can do. And also, if someone is moving here, just to, you know, get a new scenery to, you know, maybe they don't even have a family, and they're into other stuff, just as they were mentioning, the American Graffiti. That's a show that anybody can really enjoy. And, you know, all these cars are something that everybody loves and loves to see, you know, ride down. But there's also other, oh, sorry.
Okay, we'll start off, this is another 30-second answer. We'll start off with David. David, picture in your mind the huge vacant parcel of land at the northeast corner of Oakdale Road and Floyd Avenue, the crossroad from the Lake Shopping Center just south in Maragui Lake. If you were all-powerful, what sort of development would you put on that vacant property?
What was the location again? Oakdale Road and?
Oakdale Road and Floyd Avenue.
Floyd Avenue. Well, I think that's an ideal spot for more housing. We do have a shortage of housing in Modesto. And that could be a multi-housing facility, either apartments or condos for new families that would like to start a family and also have a home here in Modesto.
Okay. Hunter, same question.
I would definitely say that, I agree somewhat with David, that I think that housing could fit well in that area and that development that we could build out there. But I also say that there's good opportunity for new businesses to come around. I definitely think that the pandemic has done a number on business in Modesto. So I think building new spaces for new businesses to come and for us to try to attract new businesses to fill those spots that we would build so that we can have new businesses in Modesto, get more jobs to people who live in the district in the city, and then have houses nearby that people can then move into and then, you know, be close by to all these different kinds of restaurants and stores that would pop up. So I think that there's great opportunity for both of those types of developments.
Okay. Jessica?
I'm kind of agreeing on Hunter's idea with it being housing and businesses, because, I mean, there is a shortage in housing. Also, a lot of people are looking to more affordable housing. But, you know, a lot of people are also looking to expand their business or even open a new business.
Okay, thanks. And Kelston?
Yeah, so I would say bringing in some type of high-end retail, kind of continue the same vibe that they've done with the Save Mark Center on the corner. And if that wasn't a possibility of bringing in some single-family home development, bringing a developer to kind of get that going and so we can fill that gap of, you know, the housing shortages that we're in right now with low inventory. So I think that would work.
Thank you.
Okay, this next question is also a short 30-second answer question. When voting on tricky issues, is it more important for a city council member to do what he or she thinks is right or to represent the will of the people in his or her district? And we'll start with Mr. Salz.
You know, one of the quotes that I love to stand by is John Adams saying, always stand on principle, even if you stand alone. And I think there's a fine line to ride between doing what you think is right and then doing what the community wants. Because sometimes you might want to do something that you think is right, but looking at all aspects of whatever the situation and the vote you will do, per se, could affect negatively or positively to the community. And I think you need to ride a fine line between doing what's right and listening to community. Because at the end of the day, I'm not running to try to put my will upon Modesto. I'm trying to run to represent my district and the people who live here. So I really think that it's key for me to take all viewpoints and all ideas that people have when it comes to an issue that they want me to vote on.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, same question.
I think it's important to listen to your community that you represent, get their opinion, and also try to do what's right for the community, but also make sure that your thoughts and your reasoning for doing what you're going to do is well-known to your community.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez?
On something more tricky or controversial, I think either way, it comes down to speaking to the community. Because at the end of the day, we are here to serve the city. And by the city, you know, that includes every single individual person that's in there. So, you know, we have to work around what they want and what benefits everybody. If it's something that maybe we need to learn a little bit more about to create some type of understanding between, whether it's myself or someone, you know, another council member and each individual, then, you know, there can be some type of, you know, a learning experience between them. So there's better understanding to make better choices. But at the end of the day, it's crucial to have that communication with the community and know what they want and what benefits them.
Thank you. And Mr. Ober?
Yeah, so I would be in agreement with my fellow candidates, kind of what they've already mentioned. You know, I'll be for the people, by the people. If elected, I would be available to our residents in our district 24/7 and have that open line of communication. So I would definitely be the voice of the people in our district and for the city as a whole, if elected.
Thank you. This will be a question that requires a 30-second answer as well. How concerned should voters be about the validity of all mail ballots in Stanley County? Mr. Wright?
Well, I think that's a good question, Garth. I know that the county recorder's office has been looking at that. 75% of the ballots that have been mailed in in the past have been all mail-in. Have been absentee ballots. So we only have 25% that will be mailed out that normally aren't mailed out. So I think the county recorder has set up a good program. She's going to have drop-off boxes throughout the city, and I think it's going to be a...
Very, very good. Ms. Gonzalez, all mail elections.
If I may understand the question correctly, then my answer would be that, I mean, once you receive the ballot, it's as valid as if you were to go in and vote to whichever facility lets you. You know, just because it's coming to your house and it's something that maybe someone's not used to, it's still the ballot that matters, it's still their vote that still matters. So it's something that they still need to take into consideration of, this is still a real election, even if I don't have to get up and go vote somewhere, you know, even if it's brought to me.
Thank you. Mr. Ober, should we be concerned about all mail ballots?
You know what? I don't believe so. I would want to stress to our residents that they make sure that they send their ballots in at least a week, week and a half in advance to make sure that their vote is validated and counted. So I don't see a huge issue with this. I'm confident in the postal service, whether, you know, with the whole mailing in, whether you drop it off at the main office or putting it in your mailbox in your community, I think it's going to be safe, just getting the word out of getting it out seven days at least minimum to make sure that it is counted.
Thank you. And Mr. Salz?
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Ober in saying that I think that this election, I don't feel any cause of concern for my ballot or anyone else's ballot during this mail-in election. But it does come down to making sure that when you get your ballot, that you do your due diligence and send them out quickly after you made your decision on who you want to vote for, make sure that you mail it in or drop it off, and that you make sure that you do so. And as long as we do, as long as people do that and they make sure that they mail in their ballots or they drop them off at designated drop-off spots, then I have complete faith in the postal service in the county and to make sure that all our votes are recorded properly.
Thank you. Maria?
Okay, this next question is a minute question, so you have a little more time, but I'll still give you the time signals. So we're going to start with Jessica first. Please characterize the culture of the current Modesto City Council and describe how you would affect it if you are elected.
Sorry, can you repeat the question? I don't know if I understood it properly.
Sure. Please characterize the culture of the current Modesto City Council and describe how you would affect it if you are elected. How would you fit in with the current city council?
To be honest, I mean, I don't think I would affect it in a negative way. I think if I were to be elected, I would affect it in a positive way just because I do have a positive ideology for my campaign and to, you know, to be elected as councilwoman. I mean, I'm, like I've mentioned, I'm for everybody. I don't discriminate with anything. So I don't, I don't think my seat there would really affect anything in a negative way. I could only think of positive things that would go about.
Okay. Same question, Mr. Ober. Please characterize the current culture of the Modesto City Council and how would it be affected if you were elected?
So, you know, I don't think I'm in a position to, I don't feel like I would want to say anything negative about the current councilship and the mayor. I know if I'm elected, I will go in there willing and able to work on behalf of our residents in our area and trying to work and build relationships with the current council members, with our current mayor if he is reelected or if we have a new mayor coming in. So my main focus is going to be to work with them and building these relationships so we do function in a professional and proper way for our residents in the city of Modesto.
Okay. Hunter Salz, how would you describe the current culture of the Modesto City Council? And how would that be affected if you were elected?
So I would definitely describe the culture of the council as, you know, I won't attack any or say anything negative about any of the city council members because I genuinely believe that every person on that council, from any of the district seats to the mayor, generally want to help their community the best they can in their own ways. But I do think that the character of the council currently and other, in the same viewpoints that I've talked to some people, that they feel like they're playing politics too much, you know? The city council and this district seat is supposed to be a nonpartisan office, and you're supposed to approach it as such. And I think too many people in the council, in the council itself, play, you know, Democrat lines, Republican lines. And if I get elected, I don't want to play politics. I want to get work done. I want to get there to do what I say I will do and help my district. And that's why I'm running a nonpartisan campaign as an independent, the way that I view politics. And I don't want to run a Democratic campaign or Republican campaign. I want to share my viewpoints that are both liberal or conservative, and I want to hear all liberal and conservative viewpoints or moderate viewpoints of my district so I can get work done. Because that's all I'm here to do, is to get work done for my district and the people who live here.
Okay. And same question, David Wright.
You know, you have seven individuals that have seven different opinions that try to work together. And I think the current council has really done a good job. When they first took over five years ago or four years ago, city of Modesto had about $2 to $3 million in reserves. And then working together, now city of Modesto has set in about $18 million in their reserves. Plus, we have seen the council work along with the county on focus on prevention and start to do more downtown development and also help on the street team, cleaning the streets and helping the homeless, giving them a hands-up. So the council, I think, has, even though they have different opinions, I think they've done a good job considering.
Thank you. The issue of police enforcement and race relations has been in the news quite a bit in the last few weeks. We're wondering if you would support the creation of an independent civilian review board for the Modesto Police Department? We'll give you 30 seconds for this answer. We'll start with Mr. Ober.
Yeah, so as I've gone throughout my neighborhood and spoken with our residents, I've asked that question. And the majority of the responses that I have received is yes, they would like to see some type of board that is kind of going to oversee and give a recommendation when needed. But also, we have a district attorney's office and a DA that is pretty much the bottom line. So they are in favor of having a board or a committee oversight with limited powers, what I've taken from my residents in our area. So I would be for it, and our residents are for it. And yeah, so like I said, I'm here to serve our residents. So if they're saying that they're for it, we're for it.
Thank you. Mr. Salz, same question, civilian review board for the police department?
I would agree also that I think that the idea of the civilian oversight board is a good idea. And I would like to see it happen and make sure that we talk about it and we make sure that when we institute it, it's instituted properly with, you know, good people with good heads on their shoulders so that we can make sure that should something terrible, you know, with our police department, which I don't think will because I think our police chief and our police officers do a fantastic job. And just to make sure that we address that and we handle that situation appropriately. And I think that the idea of this oversight board is a good idea to help bridge trust between our police officers, our police department, and our citizenry.
Thank you. Mr. Wright?
At this time, I would not be for it because, number one, we have a good district attorney that really reviews all cases that come before her that have to do with the police department. Plus, our chief has already reached out to the community. When there's a question on any type of officer involvement, chief is there to answer to the community. He does have regular meetings with different groups in the community to answer their questions and let them know exactly what the police department's doing. So at this time, I would not be in favor of it.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez?
Hey, I would definitely be in favor of something like that only because of what's going on. I don't really see it as a law enforcement and racial issue. I just feel like it's more of a law enforcement and aggression issue. I've talked to multiple people on this matter, and it's not just colored people who have dealt with this type of brutality, but also those who are white. So everybody really gets affected of this. It's just more people who, you know, see the news and stuff, obviously see more of colored folk getting brutalized. And it's something that is sad to see. And if it ever does happen, or if, you know, if it has been reported already here in Modesto, we should have, you know, some type of review board that will actually have some type of help because of, you know, obviously, there shouldn't be too much aggression on having to arrest someone or having to, you know, make them go through their due process.
Thank you. Mr. Ober, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I just want to kind of add it to that is, you know, going back to this board, you know, again, the folks that I've talked to, it's not really about, in my opinion, I don't believe that we have a systemic problem. I believe that we have a bunch of really good law enforcement officers out there protecting our communities every day. I feel like the board should be there to give a recommendation of what their thought is. But, you know, to say that there's mass brutality, I don't see it that way. I think we need to come out more often than not and just support our police. And when there's a situation that has occurred that is not right, what's right is right and what's wrong is wrong. And I feel like if we don't get more involved as a community with our law enforcement and be that voice, whether elected as a council member or just a citizen in your neighborhood, you know, I just feel like at this point in time, we need to come together and work on these issues together and bring the law enforcement and the community together.
Okay, thank you.
That's my view on that.
Thank you. So our next question has to do with another topic of importance these days, the coronavirus pandemic. And this is a 30-second question. Should Modesto do more to enforce COVID safety rules? And we'll start with Mr. Salz.
I definitely feel that, I feel like Modesto should give a strong effort to make sure that COVID precautions are taken seriously and that we do them. And I've seen both how the military has handled the coronavirus when I was in Virginia for some schooling with National Guard and during manual training with them. They take it very, very seriously, and they make sure that we have masks on at all times. And I understand people don't like the masks. I don't like the mask. It fogs up my glasses. I don't enjoy it. But I wear a mask every time I go out in public because I don't want to risk myself catching the disease. And I don't want to risk anyone that I happen to come across getting the disease if I have and I don't know it. And so it just comes down to me personally thinking that we should do to make sure that we keep people healthy and safe and just do it out of common respect for our fellow man or woman.
Thank you. Ms. Gonzalez, should the city be doing more to enforce COVID rules?
I believe so. And I'm not just saying that from my personal experience, but also I do receive at least 10 customers a day who literally beg me to make people wear masks because I do get, from time to time, I will receive a customer who doesn't want to wear a mask or doesn't have one, so I will give them one. But I get at least 10 people a day telling me that they want me to do more and implement a little bit more with the people who don't want to comply.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, your thoughts?
My thoughts is that citizens of Modesto have done a great job on policing their cells, wearing their masks. When I go into the grocery store, I wear a mask. Everyone in there, I would say 99% are wearing masks. And I think the citizens have taken this very seriously. Should the city of Modesto do more? I think the city of Modesto has done what they should have done. I don't think there's any more that they can do at this time. And hopefully, we can get through this and get back to working.
Thank you. And Mr. Ober?
You want to go ahead real quick, Jessica? Go ahead.
Oh, no, I didn't. Sorry. You can go ahead, and then I'll reply.
Oh, okay. All right, thank you. I would echo what David had said. I believe Modesto's done a fairly decent job on enforcing the rules. I know there are some businesses that have taken the extra precautions. But I also know that a lot of us as residents have taken the precautions of wearing masks, sanitizing, and we are flattening the curve. So with that being said, I think it's time to safely open and do that slowly, but start getting our businesses that aren't essential back open. And if we can be a part of that process and doing it right, I believe that's going to be better off for our community, our employees, our business owners that have suffered majorly, the ones that especially aren't essential or considered essential. So that's my view on that. And if we do it right, I think we'll all come out on the end of this better off.
Thank you.
I wanted to add on to... I wanted to add on to what David Wright had responded. I don't believe that Modesto has done enough when it comes down to the COVID requirements, just because I have spoken to a lot of people that do live here and some that don't live here. And most people who refuse to follow certain rules to, you know, to avoid catching this virus always say that because the government does not imply it, and by government, I do mean our local government, does not enforce this, they will not do it. I have to think about myself by having someone else put their mask on. I can't really just take care of myself if someone else is speaking to me or sneezing around me or coughing around me with no type of face covering at all. So, when it comes down to everyone having to take care of themselves, I don't really understand that when the point of the mask is to not spread, not to not catch because, you know, it's how it's made.
Thank you.
Thank you. This next question is a thirty second answer. I will start with you, David. What is your personal approach to wearing a mask in public?
When I'm in public, if I'm going to the grocery store, which I do probably once a day to pick up dinner, I love to cook. I do wear a mask into the grocery store. When I'm out by myself, walking by myself, I don't wear a mask or I'm by myself. I'm in my car, I don't wear a mask because I'm in my car by myself. But when I'm out in public, going to a restaurant, eating outside, I'll wear a mask. But when I sit down, I will take my mask off.
Okay. Thank you. Jessica?
Hi. So, I do personally wear masks, especially when I'm out. My business was considered essential, so we never closed from the beginning. So, I have been wearing masks since the beginning and I do offer masks for my customers. So, I do buy boxes to hand to my customers every time because, like I said, I do receive customers who don't come inside with masks and I want to protect myself at all costs.
Thank you. Kelston?
Yeah, yes. So, I think, again, it's letting people know if you're not social distancing and you're in a tight quarters, of course, wearing the mask. Our businesses have implemented strict policies on entering their facilities. Masks are required. So, of course, I am wearing a mask going throughout my workday. I do wear a mask out of respect when I'm around or interacting with other individuals. Yes.
Okay. And Hunter, I think you made your point, but if you want to reiterate?
Yeah, I mean, I wear a mask when I go out to eat. If I go to a store, if I go anywhere, I wear, if I'm jogging outside, I won't wear a mask unless I come across someone on my path and I'll put the mask on as I run past them just out of common decency. That's at least how I take it. And, you know, I just do it, like I said, because I just want to make sure I'm doing my part and not trying to get anyone sick or catch the disease.
Thank you.
Okay, this next question is a minute question. And this is, what is your strategy for bringing jobs to Modesto? And we'll start with Mr. Ober.
Yeah, so kind of going back to what I was saying, I think we have to start the process of opening up our, all of our businesses that aren't considered essential. I think that'd be the number one first thing we can do and doing it safely with a strategy within the city council that they've kind of already started to implement and then kind of taking it from there. Obviously, we're in a rural valley that's heavily dependent on agriculture. So, obviously, making sure we're taking care of our ag workers and getting them back up and running. We're in almond season right now, so the harvest is underway. So, they're just getting the process started and getting our businesses up and established and open and that be immediate of these businesses that are willing to reopen.
Thank you. Mr. Saul, same question. How would you bring jobs to Modesto?
So, I would like to do something similar to what Kelston had said is that I'd like to make sure that all of our businesses that were deemed essential or nonessential are open as long as they are following COVID safe protocols. While they operate business, they should be allowed to be open. In terms of bringing new business, I would like to push and see for higher business incentives to bring people into Modesto. I'd also like to see us lower the cost and the fees of business licenses and do what we can for businesses that want to come in and start afresh in the middle of this pandemic that we're still going on so that they're not too strained and they can hire more people that live in our district and live in our city. And also so that we can try and help our current businesses that have either been able to remain open with some modifications for COVID or haven't been able to be open and now we're trying to let them open so that they can have a sort of, they can have a break so that we can give them a little bit of slack so they can resituate themselves and gain more capital and just overall commit back to the growth of our economy here in Modesto.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, how would you bring jobs to Modesto?
You know, we have a lot of jobs in Modesto. I talk to employers every day that are looking for people to work and they're having a hard time finding people to fill those jobs. In today's paper, Modesto B, Amazon is adding twenty-five hundred new jobs to the area and they're having to pay a thousand dollar bonus on a lot of those jobs to get people to come work for them. So, there are a lot of jobs in the area. I think a lot of the companies that would like to come over here, one of the problems that they're running into is that we don't have the quality of the technicians that they need in order to fill the jobs that they would bring over here. That's one of the things that Volt with opportunities, Stanislaus is doing, training people so that the employers here that need people to work in the factories can go and work in the factories. And so, I think we have plenty of jobs. It's just giving a good trained workforce in order for us to fill these jobs.
Thank you. And Ms. Gonzalez?
On the job side, there are a lot of people who stayed without jobs, even lost their jobs because some businesses ended up closing permanently and are willing to work. So, you know, we have workers available on hand. I mean, there are a lot of, there are a lot of jobs, I mean, a lot of employers who are looking for people urgently. We're talking like, you know, mass hiring almost everywhere. I've seen now hiring, you know, banners on almost nearly every business in Modesto or at least a listing for it. So, I mean, there are people ready to work. And besides that, if we do end up, you know, constructing either more houses or more businesses, I mean, in construction itself, we can bring jobs for those who are able to do that because, you know, some people who were in construction were actually affected by COVID as well.
Okay, this next three questions are actually a series of sort of rapid fire questions. So, there are thirty seconds or less. You may not even need that long. And it's about other local races that are happening right now. So, we're going to start with the, we're going to start with Hunter Sauls and these will be, of course, quick. So, the first one will be, who do you support in the race for Congressional District Ten, Josh Harder or Ted House?
Me personally, I will be voting for Representative Harder. I like what he's done. I like the effort that he's put in for the valley. I think that he can do good things and I think that he wants to work for us. And I support him and I think that if we give him a second term, I think he'll help the valley and I think he'll do his very best to try and help Modesto and the other cities and towns here in Stanislaus County.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Wright, same question?
I'm supporting Ted House. I'm supporting Ted because Ted believes in the right of life. And to me, that's very important. So, I'm supporting Ted House.
Okay. Jessica?
Right now, I am supporting Harder just because I do know more about him since the last election. I'm barely learning about House, so I don't have much on him. I mean, if I'm, right now, if I could say that I am neither one or the other because, only because I don't know much about House yet to switch over. As of right now, I know more about Harder than I do about House.
Okay. And Kelston?
Yeah, so I just want to first off come out and say I'm for the best candidate for this, for this, to represent us. So, that being said, I personally have done a lot of research on this. And so, I'll be throwing my weight behind Congressman House or Candidate House for the seat. And here's why. I feel like what this country has gone through in the last two and a half, three years, you know, has Mr. Harder really gone out to, in Washington to advocate on us, the people in the Central Valley and be that strong leader, a voice for us. And so, I have some doubts. I know he's signed on to a few water bills and they have achieved a few things, but it's been very, very political. And so, for me, it just comes down to the best candidate, not really so much politics for this race.
Okay. And the next one is, who do you support in the race for Stanislaus County Supervisor, District One? That's between Buck Condon and Bill Zalaki. We'll start with Hunter again.
In terms of this race, I have to do more research myself personally. I have yet to make a decision. When I do my research on both candidates and if I, you know, when I find who I think is the best candidate for this office, I'll make my decision then. But at this time, I have not made a decision for that race.
Okay. David Wright?
I support Bill Zalaki. He's a great businessman, been a good city council representative here in Modesto, and I think he would be the best person for the job.
Okay. Jessica?
I'm kind of with Hunter here. I haven't done my full research on either or to make a definite decision on who to vote for. But once I'm able to know more about my candidates, then I'm able to pick and choose which one is better for, not only our city, but our county.
Okay. And Kelston?
Yeah, so I'm still waiting to make a decision on that. So, I'm undecided at this moment. Once I read the candidate's statements, I personally don't know them. So, again, once I read these statements on the ballot, I'll make a determination at that point.
Okay. And the last one is, who do you support in the race for Modesto Mayor? I know there's a lot of candidates. So, if you can recall just one that you support or the other, that would be all we need. So, we'll start with Hunter again.
Again, there's so many candidates for the mayor race that I want to make sure I do my homework. You know, I know Doug's, Doug Ryan Howard's platform and I think he has a great platform. And I know about Kristi Ayew's platform. I think she has valid points too. So, it's down to me researching every single candidate that's still on the field for the mayorship, make my decision based on who I think is going to best represent this city as mayor, and then I'll make that decision. But at this time, I need to make sure I evaluate every single candidate personally to make sure that I am confident in my vote, who I think will do best for our city.
Okay. David?
You know, we have some great candidates running for mayor and I think our current mayor, Ted, has done a great job in bringing Modesto along, helping in our reserve for eighteen million dollars in reserve, adding more police and police to City of Modesto along with our sitting councilmen have done great. So, Doug has done a great job as council. Ted has done a great job. Those two are probably my top two that I think would be good for Modesto.
Okay. And Jessica?
To be honest, all the candidates, they have really good points and really good views and experience and all the above. But I am proud to say that I've decided I'm voting for Noramson. I believe he is for the people willing to listen. He sees all issues as they are, not just, not just who it is, but he sees them unbiased and tries to find a solution to any issue that's confronted to him. And I really like that.
Okay. And finally, Kelston?
Yeah, so I know Mayor Brandevall has been put in a really tough situation and I commend him for everything he's done for our city. But also, I'm going to be meeting with our other candidates here in the next week, week and a half. And once I meet with them, I will base that decision on those interactions and then go from there. Yeah.
Okay, this next question, one minute reply. We will start with Hunter. As a private citizen, what do you feel is your single most important contribution to the Modesto community?
You know, I think my biggest contribution that I've done was join the army. And I say that not really liking my answer and not for the reason, not for any reason that I don't like the army. I love everything that the army gave me and everything that I did while I was in the service and the things I do now for the California National Guard. But I haven't been able to do more than I think, do enough that I think I should to directly give back to my community, you know. And that's something, that's the reason why I wanted to run because I wanted to give back to my town directly. I wanted to give back to the city that I was born and raised in and have only known as my home. And so, I want to give back and serve my community and my city the same way that I was willing to serve my country with honor, with integrity, with personal courage in everything that I do and everything that I say and everything that I'll stand by. And so, I hope that if the voters see fit to elect me, that I can then say that my proudest contribution to my city was to be their elected representative on the city council for District Six.
Thank you. David?
Brian, that's a great question. You know, we have so many nonprofits here in Modesto and I think all of us can lend a hand to help with our nonprofits. I've served on several boards with our nonprofits, helping, giving people a hand up, not a handout. And it's just a blessing to help people, to help them become a better citizen. And also, we have a lot of great committees in the City of Modesto that need good quality people to serve on those committees for the city. I serve on a couple of committees. I also served on the Blue Ribbon Commission for the Homelessness eleven years ago. And a lot of our things that we came up with is being implemented now through focus on prevention. So, there's a lot of great things out there that people can volunteer and get involved.
Thank you. Jessica?
I would say that my best contribution to the community really is just getting to know my people. I'm a very social person and I'm also a people pleaser. So, whenever someone presents me an issue or situation, I try the best I can do to help them out of that situation as if it was my own. And so, that's the same energy that I want to be putting into the city and expanding my social interaction with not just my customers, but my entire city, my district and everyone that I'm going to be representing if I get elected.
Thank you. Kelston?
Yeah, so I think it goes to leading by example within your community and I feel like I've done that, being a part of Love Modesto, MS Society Walk, things of that nature. So, I feel like given this opportunity to run for the city council seat, to give back to the town that's given me so much. And I've met my wife here and we've had our children and we've had a successful business for the last decade. So, I'm overall just being, leading by example and being a good citizen within your community. I think that's what we should all strive for.
Thank you.
Okay, so we've come to the final question before closing statements. And we'd just like you to briefly share what you appreciate about your opponents. And we'll start with Mr. Ober.
So, this is the first time on this forum that I've been able to see them. I've never met them in person, but I can tell you, they are all wonderful people, given the fact that they're putting themselves out there to want to do better for our community and City of Modesto. So, I commend you guys for that and I thank you for that. And yeah.
Thank you. And Mr. Wright?
Well, I've never met any of my opponents. I do, my hat's off to Hunter Sauls for serving in the military. I served in the military two years ago. And that's, thank you for your service, Hunter.
Thank you for yours, sir.
Yeah, thank you for your service.
You know, it's great that we see young people that want to get involved and I would encourage each one of you, no matter who wins, to, if you don't win, get involved in your community, get involved with the City of Modesto, get involved with the nonprofits and, you know, really find out what's happening in Modesto. And there's some great committees to get on to really see what's happening in the city.
Thank you. And Ms. Gonzalez?
I want to thank everybody for really, you know, actually putting themselves out there and, you know, making their own campaign just as I am. I mean, I'm pretty sure between myself, Hunter and Kelston, this is our first time running, if I'm not mistaken, just because I haven't seen any of their names on any other ballot. So, I do like the determination that we all have and motivation to do this. And I, I mean, this is the first time I'm meeting everyone as well. I didn't really take into consideration meeting my candidates until a little bit later on. I kind of wanted to see what I can do first and see, you know, how I can fit into this new field because it is something that's a little bit new to me. But, you know, I'm glad that the, you know, my other candidates aren't too far from my views either. I mean, it seems like we all kind of want the same thing. And it's in a different, obviously in a different format because we all have different answers. But we're not too far from each other and that's- And that's really good because if we can all listen to the community, listen to the people, I mean, that's essentially what the community wants, someone who will listen.
Thank you very much. Mr. Salz?
Well, first, I'd like to again say thank you to Mr. Wright for his service. You know, I appreciate your service as well and thank you for that. And then with all the other candidates, you know, similar to what we've been saying about each other is that I love the fact that we're all willing to put ourselves out there and that we're all willing to take a position and a stance and get on a ballot to, one, to help our community and to make our communities better. We all share that in common and it's all something that we all strive and wish to achieve, regardless of the different viewpoints we may have between each other. All we want to do is serve the people of this district and the people of this city. And so, I appreciate the fact that I get to run against such fine candidates and people that want to make a difference to the community and I thank them for that.
Thank you very much. We appreciate everybody's participation. It's time for closing statements now. We'll go in reverse order. Let's try to keep it to no more than one minute. Reverse order means that David Wright goes first.
Well, for 35 years, I have called Modesto my home for my family and my business. During this time, we have seen great changes in our community. And moving forward, we need to build on our strengths and our successes. Being financially responsible, our public safety for our families, and affordable housing needs to be part of our priorities. With my background serving on nonprofit boards and chaired the Blue Ribbon Commission on the homeless in 2011, which we have seen our recommendations implemented and served twice for the Modesto Comprehensive Fee Task Force and currently serve two other city of Modesto communities, I feel that I have the experience needed to serve District 6 as a councilperson. I want to thank Modesto B for giving us this opportunity and to share. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Salz?
The main thing that I wish to say to the people watching this and the voters is that I want to bring a drive to the city council, that I want to do everything I can to make my district and the city better. The Army taught me the value of a hard work, of a hard-working day and a hard-working attitude. It taught me to be prepared to wake up early and go to bed late and that's the exact same approach I want to take with being your representative in the city council. I'm prepared to wake up at whatever time I need to, to learn whatever I need to learn, to do right by you and to learn everything I need to learn to effectively be your city councilperson. And I would like nothing more than to humbly submit myself for your consideration to vote for me and do the best I can for you as your councilman, should you see it fit to elect me. And like I said before, I want to thank the Modesto B for having me and having the rest of us. This has been a pleasure and I really, really enjoyed this forum that we've all had together.
Thank you, Hunter. Kelston Ober.
Yeah. So, I'm Kelston Ober. I'm running for city council. I'm just a hard-working business owner here in Modesto. I'm a normal resident that just wants to be a part of the change that I'd like to see. I'm thankful for the opportunities the city has given me and I really hope, if elected, so I can put forth changes that I know that are important to our residents in our community. I want to thank Garth, Maria, Patty, Brian for having us all on this platform to reach out to our voters and thank you for that.
Thank you. Jessica Gonzalez?
Well, I want to say I thank you guys so much and I really appreciate the opportunity that was given to me to speak to everyone and really promote my campaign for city council. As I've stated, the reason that I'm running is for the people. I will always be open for discussion with anyone, whether it is in person or by contacting me through any other way. My goal is not only to represent my district, but also my city as a whole. I will be here to listen to my people and openly discuss with my fellow city council members regarding any issues that are present. That way, we may help everyone and take everyone into consideration without discrimination when making laws or voting for anything for our wonderful city. And the people being represented by me, like I said, is District 6, but I do want to consider everyone, the whole city, if I'm elected as councilwoman. And like I said, I really appreciate the opportunity that was given to me and I just want to also appreciate the consideration for the people in voting for me if they, I mean, obviously if they are considering. And I just want to remind them that a vote for me is a representation of their voice.
Thank you very much. Well, candidates, you've given us much to think about and to consider. We know that many readers and viewers appreciate this area of issues and ideas. So, thank you for your participation. Viewers, be sure to tune in for more debates here at modby.com throughout September and up until the November 3rd election. Already available for viewing at modby.com are forums that we did earlier with candidates for the other two Modesto city council seats, as well as races for two Stanislaw County supervisor seats for state senate and for Ceres mayor. Tomorrow, we will assist South Modesto Partnerships in a forum featuring all seven candidates for Modesto Mayor and two men running to represent District 5 on the county board of supervisors. And next week's lineup includes our own editorial board debate with the Modesto mayoral candidates. We'll also have a forum next week featuring all five candidates for two seats on the Turlock City Council. Thank you and good evening.